Here.
Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner. Commissioner Amber. Please, no, here. Give me thumbs up, Commissioner Amber.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Heavenridge.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Foles.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
And I'm here as well. All right, moving on to item number two, do we have any? Commissioner Tchibo.
So if you haven't read the news, our very own Healdsburg library staff, John Hampton, Charity Anderson, won an award from the Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services recognizing their own biblio bike. So they received the award at the conference and they're going to be looking forward to unveiling a new bicycle-focused community initiative this spring, and we hope to hear back from them when that happens.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, so now moving on, we have no action items by resolution, so let's move into presentations. Before we start, is there any public comment on our presentations? Oh, Director Tchibo, would you like to introduce our presenters?
So tonight, we are seeing a presentation by John Haupt, Branch Manager, Healdsburg Regional Library and Charity Anderson, Children's Librarian. This was for an innovation grant, private project, and they are here to tell us all about their project.
Thank you, Director Tchibo and Commission. Thank you so much for having us speak today. I am going to introduce myself, John Haupt, Branch Manager at Healdsburg since 2015. Before that, I was the Wine Librarian over there, and so I had a few opportunities to be in front of you. Civic engagement can be found in so many ways. We're seeing it in a lot of people now getting involved in protesting and showing up at board meetings, et cetera. But one thing that I feel proud of in my work is community building as like a really important role in terms of civic engagement. And I would say this project has represented a true triumphant community building. I just wanted a couple thanks to some people who have contributed greatly, since Laura Mayelli for helping come up with the ideas and working so hard with Charity on this, on our fabulous proposal and providing so much of the structure for Book Buddies, the Book Buddies component. I want to thank Kathy for helping us out all the way as our OMT liaison, and want to call out Stephanie Jordan, our Teen Services Librarian, for taking on more and more of the work of Book Buddies as the year progressed. And although it all put a lot of effort in, and myself being there at the board all throughout the project up to this very presentation, I do want to call out Charity here for leading this project from the first ideas of this proposal through doing all the work with logistics and juggling and communicating with teams and restaurants and community partners, getting all of our books and materials in order and just showing up throughout the whole year. And I would say it represents a major accomplishment, of course.
Whoever invented this deserves a.
Raise the quality of life in Healdsburg and beyond. With that, I want to hand over the microphone to Charity, who has been the Children's Services Librarian at Healdsburg for 15 years. Thank you very much.
See if I can get this right. All right, so yeah, we were really excited to get the opportunity to apply for these funds at the end of 2023. And Laura and I were both looking forward to the Healdsburg renovation. We knew we were having a remodel that was coming, coming up and that we were going to be faced with a closure. At that time, we didn't know that we were wanting to have a mini branch. We just thought we were going to be closed at that point. So we were really excited when in early 2024, Director Tchibo and the Innovation Grant funded our proposal for Take Time to Read and Book Buddy. If you could go to the next slide. We were funded $25,000 to put on eight community events, and that was the Take Time to Read portion, and then also do an after-school program called Book Buddies that we did at Healdsburg Elementary School with teens and children. So. At first, we had to identify our community partners. We chose City of Healdsburg, most specifically the Community Services Department, the Healdsburg Museum, Healdsburg Unified School District, and most specifically Healdsburg Elementary School, the Lower Elementary School, which is K through second, and then Corazon Healdsburg. We identified them as our partners. These are all organizations that we had already been working with, but our time over this project really strengthened our connection with those organizations. So first, a little bit about Take Time to Read. We held eight different events at eight locations. Some of the locations were repeated throughout the time of the program, and each event was held on a Saturday morning off-site. We were at our mini branch, but we went to the parks, we went to the Healdsburg Museum, we went to the multipurpose room at the community center, and we spent time at Healdsburg Elementary School as well. And so each of these events had bilingual storytime that I did with Noelia, who is at the time was an extra help staffer, help staff, and now she's at Rinkin Valley, I believe. We gave away hardcover books, we did crafts, activities. The biblio bus was at five of our events, and then our biblio bike, which we were just talking about, was also at several of these events. So each of the events ended with by us sharing a community meal that we had catered from different restaurants around Healdsburg. And do you want to go to the next slide? So you can see just a few numbers. We had over 350 attendees at our eight, at our eight events. And a little bit about how we spent our funding for these community events. Each attendee got one of the tote bags that the graphics department branded so beautifully for Take Time to Read. They also received a neck light that was meant to encourage them to read at night and to, you know, find nooks that, you know, wherever they could read that needed illumination, they each shot one of those. And I failed to mention in the last slide, the entire reason for these events was to increase reading joy. That's the main thing that I failed to mention. But we wanted reading, we wanted to celebrate reading. We want it to be fun. We don't want it to be thought about only as a homework assignment, which a lot of times it is thought of as a homework assignment. A child has to read 20 minutes a day, it needs to be at a specific AR book level, and it takes away some of the joy. So we wanted to come together as a community, not only to celebrate reading, but just to motivate children and families to read together. And then also, we, being in Healdsburg, there's so much lovely delicious food, we wanted to be able to share a meal together. So each of the events ended with a meal. So we spent about $600 on tote bags, another 1,300 on necklights. We spent about $5,600 on food, and the food came from restaurants like Costos, Mambos, Monte Alba, Mexican Market, El Milagro, Quinsmoke. And then our final event was at Little Saint, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. We also spent over $5,000 on those hardcover books so that we could give each attendee at the events a hardcover book to take home. So by the end of the series, they would have eight really nice quality books that they could add to their home library. All right, so. I can't highlight all of the events because they were all very special, they're all very unique, but the one of the ones that stands out was our second event that we had at the Healdsburg Museum, the beautiful October Day. We had the storytime in their little courtyard. The staff at the Healdsburg Museum, Holly and Lauren, they brought in a old-fashioned apple prep, so the family got to craft their own apple juice. We had a read to a dog happening inside the museum, where there was also an interactive exhibit about the history of the Russian River. So there's all these different little components of all of us coming together. The bus was there always, like at five of the events, so that they could make library cards for families. Families could get on the bus, they could check out books because our library was closed, and we had the mini branch at the other end of town, but they could also return their books at the biblio bus during that time, which was great. And in the corner up there, you can see our biblio bike just open with all the storytime supplies and ready to go. So each community partner set the tone for the events, so they all were just a little bit different. Some had crafts, some had activities, some had the read to a dog. Some, we had community partners that were heavily involved in helping plan, and others were just kind of providing us the space. So it just depended month by month. And our finale was with Raul III, who is an author illustrator, he's an award-winning Mexican author who kind of grew up on the border town of El Paso and Ciudad Juarez. And so I chose to hire Raul for this event because I wanted, not only because of his lovely books, which I love, and he has many different series, but I wanted his experience growing up toggling two worlds between living in El Paso and going to Ciudad Juarez, where his family had a space in one of the markets there, so he went back and forth. Really wanted to bring that to Healdsburg. Many of our families at the Healdsburg Elementary School are Latino. And so actually, that was my main reason for choosing him, and I'll talk a little bit about him. We had wanted to host him in our newly renovated library, but the library wasn't done yet. And so with the help of Caroline Gonzalez from Corazon, she introduced me to some staff at Little Saint, and they donated their beautiful space upstairs for us to host this event with Raul. And Raul, at the finale, he shared stories about all of his characters and about books and his love for the library, has a whole slide that says Zebra Love. He grew up, when they moved to live in the United States permanently, he spent a lot of time as a young person in the library. So he talked a lot about that, it was a really nice message. And all of the kids at this event, they did receive a hardcover copy of his book called Vamos, Let's Go Read, so that was very delightful. We all came together for one final community meal here, which Little Saint is a plant-based restaurant. So we had plant-based vegan grilled cheese and veggies for all of the kids, and it was very well received, and it was a very nice event. Had a book signing as well, and his experience really resonated with some of our community members. So in addition to this final event, the day before, I had taken him to Healdsburg Elementary School. And Healdsburg Elementary School is K through second. We did two assemblies, one at first grade and one in the second grade. And this school is 70% Latino, it's 80% economically disadvantaged, and I had worked with them in the past and brought authors to the school as kind of a shared experience. This one, because of this grant, we were able to pay for the whole experience, bringing Raul from all the way from Boston to Healdsburg to be with these children. And I worked with Copperfield specifically in Padaluma, because they have a woman there that is named Patty Norman, and she's the children's book buyer. She also does all the promotion for the authors, children's authors, and she has a nonprofit called Bookstormers. And what they do is they, when they do these school visits and author visits, and they go to these schools where these families are not able to purchase books, they give the children the books. Now, I didn't know that she was going to give each of the children one of Raul's books that morning. We had sent out order forms, but we only had gotten maybe like four back. And so that morning, she said she was going to use funds from her Bookstormers. All 120 students in first and second grade got to go home with a book, and Raul signed all of them before he left. So it was really nice. The librarian at the school, Greta Messick, did a wonderful job promoting his books, and the kids were so excited. They were, they had two of them meeting him at the door to lead him to the library. And that shared experience that he was able to talk about, growing up in a family that spoke two languages, coming to live in the United States before he, you know, when he was only monolingual, that really resonated with the students. That was one of the delights of 2025, for sure. So as we transitioned to talk about Book Buddies, which was held at that same school, the Healdsburg Elementary School, I just wanted to share the demographics, and I already really touched upon the numbers that I wanted to share with you about Healdsburg. The reason why I do that is because people think of Healdsburg, they do not necessarily think of economically disadvantaged, but we have a large population of people that live in Healdsburg that are economically disadvantaged. So there's more than the tasting rooms and the fancy stores on the plaza. And when you look at the public school, you can really see the how dark that difference is, so. So we started Book Buddies, and with Book Buddies, we wanted to continue our mission of sharing the love and joy of reading. Post-pandemic data had indicated that reading had really decreased and plummeted in the communities around us, especially in the Latino families and working-class families, that we really wanted to kind of think about what we could do with that. We weren't trying to teach kids to read. We're trying to motivate them to want to read more, to have more fun with reading, and to really just, you know, make it an enjoyable experience. We thought about the third grade reading fluency benchmark and what students would benefit from this the most, and it just so happened that Healdsburg Elementary School, being K through second, was going to be a perfect fit. We brought in teens that were passionate about the library and the books. Most all of our teens had either grown up in the library, had volunteered with us, had been attending Laura's programs, had been a lunch-in-the-library intern. And so she did a lot of recruiting before she took her new position here in Roanoke Park. And the day of our training, I was worried, it was in the middle of summer, it was right before school started, that I didn't know how many were going to show up, and all 11 that had committed all showed up. So it was really fabulous. We held Book Buddies in the library at HES, and we had permission from the principal and the librarian, Greta Messick, there to hold it there after school. We all had to get fingerprinted because we were going to be onsite working with students. We held two sessions after school. We had those 11 teens that we kind of separated between Wednesdays and Fridays. So we had two sessions on Wednesdays, two sessions on Fridays. We did it for a total of 26 weeks. And we were able to create little cozy reading nooks there in the library with some pillows that we bought with the grant funds. We were also able to give the students gift books or reward books after four visits. Most of them always came consistently, so they ended up earning a lot of books to add to their home library throughout that time. And I just want to talk a little bit more about the teens. So the teens are really the stars in this Book Buddies program, and Stephanie Jordan, our teen librarian now, she really did a wonderful job of organizing the teens, figuring out how to communicate with them. They don't do very well with email, you know? So it was just, it was a learning experience. And like I said, we weren't there to teach the children to read, but the one requirement we had was that the teens showed up with enthusiasm. I do believe we had 12, we did have to let one go because of the lack of enthusiasm, because that's what we were serious about. We wanted them to show up with a smile on their face, be ready to pick the books out with the kid, laugh with the kids. And in one of the pictures, you'll see, maybe it was the last one, there's a girl dressed up as a shark. She's one of the teens. She came in a shark costume on the day before Halloween to read with the kids. And they really were able to create bonds, they were really able to. The teens read to the children in wonderful voices, and the kids, you know, the kids that were able to read read when they wanted to. It wasn't like you had to read when you were there. We just wanted it to be like, do you want to read today, or should I read to you? And we just made it really flexible and comfortable for the kids that came. So the teens put in over 487 hours of community service with this program, which went towards their 40 hours of community service that they need to graduate from high school. And then our Friends of the Healdsburg Library, they gave each student, the 11 each semester, a $250 honorarium check at the end of each semester. It was just a thank you for their service and their dedication, and we are so grateful to the Friends of the Healdsburg Library. They always have been so supportive in all of my ideas over the years, and the fun was really lovely. So we have some pictures up there of different teens reading with kids. We had mostly first and second graders the first semester, and then we invited some TK and kindergarteners the second semester. So bonds were formed, memories were made, and I believe that we were able to create a joyous experience over shared love of reading, and it was really a wonderful project. And I just feel very, you know, full of gratitude that we were given the opportunity to write this proposal. That was something that we really hadn't had in many years, an opportunity to get funds in the system. And that was really special, it was very motivating and invigorating. So I just want to thank you all, and thank you to my branch manager and Laura, who were very integral in the project.
Okay. Do we have any Commissioner comments or questions?
First off, thank you, and I'm super impressed, that was down to $25,000. That is very, very impressive. I know you had other partners that donated time, but still, I'm very, very impressed. So congratulations on that, that is a lot of deliverable for. Yeah, right, but still, creatively taking on partnerships and stuff like that. So I just want to say, and I think I'm a former educator, I used to run my school, like the eighth grade and the kindergarten buddies, and I think a lot of people think it's very cute for the kindergartners, and of course it is, but I actually would argue it's actually much more impactful for the older kids to be able to have that relationship. So I think we can sometimes get focused on the cute little first graders, and they are cute, of course, but I think the real benefit is often to the teens. So I just, you know, I think that's not always understood if you're not in the business there. But thank you very much.
Commissioner McKenzie.
There are so many things that I love about everything you just said, that it's hard to bring myself down to a couple, but one thing, I was curious, in the first program, if that was the same kids and families that went all the way through. It sounded like it because all, like you said, at the end, they all ended up with, was it eight books? So did they all stay together?
Definitely the idea, you know? And, you know, I feel like we had a following of families that came to all of the events, and then depending on the community partner, kind of depended as well as to, so when we were with Corazon, that was our biggest one, and I think we had maybe 76 people. They're very, very good at bringing their, their community members out, and so, but we did have a following. And then, you know, just depending on what other people were doing on those weekends when it fell, but people were really kind of sad when it ended. But, you know, we did get to welcome them back to our lovely library after that, but.
It wasn't a scene that we anything, it's just.
Yeah, we just do that. We don't do very many registrations in Healdsburg. It just seems like over the years that it just doesn't work that well, but we just planned for a specific amount, and we just hoped that it would work, and it did. So that was great. We did have to purchase more bags halfway through, purchase more necklights, but we did have enough books each.
My other question is, there are good numbers. You mentioned, I think you said 11 teens and all the bonds and everything, but the presentation is six teens and six buddies, so.
That was for each session. So the teens weren't always able to do Wednesday and Friday. So we had some teens on Wednesday and some on Friday. Some teens could only come to the first of, and because they have cheerleaders leading practice the second session. So that was really an interesting thing for us to learn and how to be flexible with the teens already very busy lives. So, but we had at least six teens each day, and each Friday, and we paired them with the students, and they have a face student each week.
Okay.
So that they were able to get to know each other, they like to read, form that bond.
Well, you know, I'm sure everybody feels the same, it was a great use of $25,000, it's fantastic work on everyone's part, especially in the middle of the renovation and all the things you were dealing with. And I'm glad that we did a kind of a significant grant, because like you said, you really could bring some more ideas in and get the author and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, great work, I mean, it just brought tears to my eyes, just so wonderful, thank you.
Commissioner Doyle.
I know I seem to always say this when you all give presentations, but I hope, I hope, I hope you're thinking about putting this in a presentation for CLA or PLA or one of them.
You proposed it.
To CLA. We did present at Healdsburg last year. But yeah.
And then sort of an ancillary question is, how are you going to follow up? This has been so successful. So after you follow up, then you can have the presentation.
Well, we are doing Book Buddies still, we did have to change it up a little bit this year, we didn't have access to the space at the lower elementary, and so what we did was we took it to the upper elementary, which is for three, four, and five. We have many of the same teens, it's a very different experience working with the third and fourth graders, it's mostly third and fourth graders. And so we're trying to decide now, we want to go back to Healdsburg Elementary School, the lower elementary school, but the Boys and Girls Club right next door is being renovated, and so they're losing that library space within, and they, they said that they would welcome us back when it was available. Many of, we've done a presentation to the teen librarians, and there are many branches in the system now that are now doing Book Buddies.
And are you, are you trying to formally work with the partners that you worked with too? Yes, the Boys and Girls Club, but also sounded like there was some interesting partnerships that you should probably continue to work on.
We work with all of those partnerships. I think we probably need to plan something with the Healdsburg Museum. I am going to a Corazon event Friday afternoon, they have their Libros y Races, which is Books and Roots, which is actually kind of where these community events came out of, because they had lost their funding, and we had wanted to like do something similar to what they had been doing, and they were able to get some funding. And so I'm going to go and be a part of their celebration on Friday and bring the library to that.
And then my last question, which is sort of tangential, the museum is a Carnegie building, right? So are we getting, so Carnegie Foundation has decided that all of the Carnegie libraries or Carnegie libraries are getting $10,000, isn't that right? Are we getting some?
We are getting $10,000, not because any of our buildings are currently Carnegie buildings, because they're not, but because we have a historical relationship. But the Padaluma Museum is getting a grant, and I believe the Healdsburg Museum is as well, so.
So whoever has it now gets the money.
Yes, no, we're getting, we're getting one $10,000 grant, but they are also getting a $10,000 grant, yeah, so $30,000 total across the county.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to library reports, are there any public comments for our library reports? See none? Director Tchibo.
All right, so one of the things that I want to let you know is that we will be, in my report, we have an update on public projects, including the Rinkin Valley Project. We are planning on bringing that to the commission at the December meeting for approval. I also want to extend a little bit on our event at the Wild Dog Saddle Club. As I put in my report, we have been asked back, and I want to just acknowledge all the hard work that went into this event, including from our development staff, but also our IT staff who were onsite with the 3D printer, and our community engagement staff who were there with the biblio bus. It was so successful, they were so impressed with our professionalism and our organizational skills that they added, you know, that they want us back, and they have given us a date, it is the second Sunday.
Second Sunday.
Second, second Sunday in September. So they, you know, they commented many times on how organized we were and how much more organized we were than other events that have been held there, and it really struck a testament to our amazing staff and their professionalism. Any questions? Any questions?
No questions?
So we made, uh, two, uh, $215,000. That was the growth. The net was 190,000. So it was almost double our initial, um, project.
Right, incredible job. Any questions for Director Tabo? Commissioner Doyle, do you have one?
Did you say September?
Yes, it will be the second Sunday in September, um, hopefully this annual, annual.
Thanks. Okay. All right, moving on to budget and finance report. I understand Myrna is on Zoom. Hello, Myrna?
Hello. I, I think the first, uh, report here for me is the financial reports ending September 30th, 2025. And, uh, this was presented to the finance committee. The, um, the fiscal, the audit for fiscal year 2425 is currently underway. Uh, there, um, we do expect a, the report we present to the finance committee in December and, uh, to the commission in January. Uh, total revenues, um, through September have been 1.4 million dollars approximately. And, uh, it is reflecting, um, uh, normal revenue streams for the library. Uh, you may see when you compare the summary sheet from last year that there is a variance. Last year, we received the building forward capital. And so that's the, the difference. But other than that, uh, we're pretty much on target and including, uh, the sales tax. Uh, last year, we made an adjustment to sales tax revenue downward because of a projected um, um, shortfall. However, this year we're on target and, um, so, so far, we've only, we received September. September is the first time that we record revenue under sales tax. And I can let you know that the month of October came in well also, and, uh, we're, we're pretty much on target. Also regarding expenditure side, um, we, the total expenditures are about $13 million. And, um, the, the one area where there is a significant expenditure compared to budget is in the capital, uh, project, which I can go further into detail in the next report for quarter one capital projects. Eventually it is due to the modernization projects that were there and continued in to this fiscal year. Um, and also, uh, the month of September was the first time the, um, finance committee and the commission is seeing a statement for fund balance. You see that the, um, the reason why that is, is that because of the, uh, we are making, do make, um, audit, adjust, um, in the month of August and September. And, uh, we do see that, uh, fund balance is approximately $9 million under sales tax, 2.3 million dollars. The state includes projects that are under discussion, but not yet, not approved by the commission. The finance committee has asked staff to those projects and, um, so that, um, the commissioners know what projects, um, are likely, those projects would affect funds. And so this is a net of projects that are under discussion and those that have been approved. Uh, that is my important sort of questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Myrna? Commissioner Goldberg?
You mentioned that sales tax is on target for your expectations for, so far, for October or September. Um, are those expectations, is that the built-in downward expectation for this year? Um, is that what it's meant? Like you've already gone downward in expectation, right?
So, uh, last year, we did a mid-year adjustment to sales tax. Because, um, after the budget had been approved, there was a forecast overall, um, that, uh, sales tax was, was going to continue to decrease last fiscal year. So when I projected the sales tax revenue for this current fiscal year, used the lower estimated figure. Um, therefore, um, it, it, I, I believe it has been, uh, the current, um, tax that has been approved for this fiscal year, um, reflects and accounts for the downward, um, shortfall from last fiscal year. So the shortfall was in last fiscal year. And so the receipts that have come in so far are aligned with the approved budget for the sales tax revenue.
Thanks. Any other questions? Moving on to item 6.2.2, preparation transfers for quarter one fiscal year 2526. Myrna, did you have any additional comments on this?
No.
Any questions from the commission? All right, thank you so much. Moving on to item number seven, the library advisory boards, Sonoma County Library Foundation and Friends of the Library presentations. I believe we have someone here, Joe Seymour from the Friends of Santa Rosa Library.
Thank you. I am Joe Seymour, uh, vice president, treasurer of the Friends. And we have now presented a report to this group for quite some time. So I just thought, I was going to be here, might as well do something. So I do want to report that our organization is really quite healthy. Bank balances are doing quite well. From 2019 to 2025, we have donated over $305,000. A hundred K of that. A hundred K of that went to Roseland, 20K to Measure W, 185K to the branch, requested the branch libraries. Uh, year to date, our net income is about 100, our net income is about 115K. Having a really good year. Our recent sale, October sale at the Veterans Building, we were a couple hundred dollars shy of $50,000 for the sale. So we, almost every one of our sales last year in the forum room or at the best building and set new records for us. It looks maybe the economy, people just want a good deal on books. Yeah, at our October sale, we also, uh, we have been contacting school teachers and other groups. Uh, at the end of our sale, we have to pay to move the books back or we just actually send them to St. Vincent's. And so, uh, we try to give away as many books as we can at the end of the sale. So, uh, at the end of our sale, we had 34 teachers from 26 schools that came in and got free books. We had 42 individuals who maintain little free libraries who came in and got free books. Six nonprofits in the Sonoma County jail, all of them were given free books. Uh, amounted to 212 bags of books. Uh, and the last thing I want to comment on is that we have been discussing, there's nothing been decided yet, but we have been discussing to amend our bylaws. And there was just a sentence that's in there that says, we support the Santa Rosa library. And we have been thinking about changing that to say, we support the Sonoma County libraries. So that we might be able to extend funds to other Friends groups or to, uh, library grants that's not in Santa Rosa. So I wanted to mention that just in case anybody had concerns, objections or reasons why we shouldn't do that, but, uh, something to think about. Any questions?
Commissioner Goldberg?
Um, one comment and one question about your book sale at Central this year. I guess, is that October? Um, I made the mistake.
October sale is at the Veteran's Building, but we will have a, we have it in the forum room in Central by the time of the year and our next one will be in December.
Well, I made the mistake as a library patron of showing up on a day of a book sale at Central and you couldn't budge in the, in the entry and, and the patio. And I mean, people were wanting that sale. It was packed and it was great.
That's true. At the forum room, in the past, I was happy, as treasurer, I was happy we made between six and eight or nine thousand dollars. Four of our sales this year in the forum room have exceeded $15,000. The last one you made, the last one you grabbed, 17,000.
It was great. And then, um, my question is, I'm just curious, couple of things that your branch managers have wanted and that you have given funds for.
Quite often, the, the, the largest amounts they're going for material for teens, adults, children, we get requests in the issue of genealogy, coming back to adult literacy, eastern branch managers. And, um, I know that I've spoken to Anna and Jennifer and Jessica all within the last week or so. And all of them says that they have, we, we ask them to, uh, twice a year present, uh, any requests. And there, there are a lot of them make requests any, anytime they want. Uh, but twice a year typical, uh, or fall, upcoming next week, um, or maybe when they're going to be submitting their requests and we'll discuss them. And all of them have informed me that they're committing significant requests. And so like Jennifer, um, last request was like an order of $12,000. She's saying she's going to have a significant one, so, uh, I have to see how that is interpreted.
Thanks.
Commissioner McKenzie?
That's an incredible report. Um, I have two questions. One is on your, um, sales in the forum room. How many days are those?
Those are typically three days, Friday says and Sunday.
17,000 in three days.
And Sundays, four hours.
Fine. Since we have them here in Rota Park, three days and $4,000. So it's a.
Yeah, like a few years ago, that's kind of the number we might have.
Wow, incredible.
We, you know, we get dealers to come in and we buy a lot. Uh, I, the October sale, I helped tally up and, uh, was a young couple there that was sent by their mother buy books for a wedding. And there was going to be a book themed wedding and they wanted to make arches and decorate tables. They bought 162 bags of books. $300 a final wedding.
That's incredible. My, my second question is, um, besides the book sales, you have kiosks. Could you tell us a little bit about the kiosks where they're in each library and how they're stocked and how you deal with that?
We just have small parks. And about this park with a lot of that on. And we, and we have volunteers that go there once or twice a week and staffs that part. So, you know, the last time I checked, we've made probably close to $14,000 so far this year on the book carts. They're, they're doing quite well. We also have an individual, one of our volunteers who sells books for us on Amazon. He does it without taking any cut, you know, or any percentage. He's also done at least $14,000 in sessions. And then we offered his book. So he's been struggling financially and having to relocate. So it's been a little bit slower this year, but, uh, but those three sources plus their sales. Thank you.
And, uh, Commissioner Elkin has the hand raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Elkin?
Yeah, thanks very much for this report. It's phenomenal what you folks are doing and I want to congratulate you. I'm just wondering, sounds like in a relatively short period of time, you've made some changes to your approach that have significantly increased the amount of revenue you're able to generate. And I'm wondering if you've, you know, documented that in any way you might be able to share with other Friends groups.
Well, uh, honestly, we really haven't done anything different except for one thing is that one of our volunteers is a a former economics professor and a marketing major, and she has been doing our advertising. And, and with, with a $400 a year budget, she has been advertising our sales and getting them onto, uh, wholesale websites and all these other places. And we think that has, uh, been a great help in driving our sales by, by numbers up.
Well, you've done a great job and thank you for what you do.
Commissioner Doyle?
Uh, do you think, do you think that the, uh, the closing of the Petaluma Library had an impact on books that would have gone to Petaluma that came up to Santa Rosa, perhaps?
Uh, I don't really know, but, uh, but thank you for mentioning that because, um, because we acknowledged that the Petaluma Library was closed and their friends were not able to collect books, we actually gave them a large donation of books. So that when the library opened up again, they were up and running.
Oh, that's great.
And as we made the same offer to Hillsburg, I don't know for sure if they've ever collected or maybe it's still around. Hillsburg collected and, and, you know, Petaluma's, that may have done that as well.
Okay, um, and I also wanted to thank you, my husband's on the Windsor Kiwanis. And a couple of years ago, um, they were trying to work with the Windsor Friends. And Windsor Friends just didn't have enough books for them to be able to, for the Kiwanis to give away for their big Christmas deal for the kids. And, um, and you all were so kind during your Christmas, uh, sale to walk our little Kiwanis people around to grab as many books. And we paid for them, they paid for them, of course, but, um, but you were just very, very kind to do that.
Uh, as I mentioned, we say if we can change our bylaws to Sonoma County, then maybe we can do some more of that.
We like that.
All right, we're moving on to item number eight, consent calendar. These matters include a routine, financial and administrative actions that may be approved by consensus. Any commission member or member of the public may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar and have it placed with the action items. The commission will approve the minutes of the prior meetings and summary formats. Are there any public comments? Any progress, your hand sprays?
I'd like to pull eight point two, um, for a short discussion. And, um, I have a question, eight point three, which I could ask now, I won't pull it. Go ahead, Nat, eight point three. Okay, uh, it sounds like this is supposed to be for everything for 2026. But when I looked in the schedule, it looked like maybe this, um, December holiday applied to this year. I just was, wasn't to make sure that I understood that all these changes were 2026 and they, none of them applied to this year. Just a question, though.
What, weekday, page 59?
What's on page 50?
Uh, no, this is for 2026. So December 31st, um, is on a Thursday on, just, um, in 2026.
Yes.
So I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, on page 59, it says, these are the changes and it starts number one. Christmas Eve is a full holiday and all buildings are closed. And since that was number one, I wondered if it was Christmas of this year.
We already approved that calendar in a previous commission meeting. So the 2025 calendar changed after the MOU was approved and we brought that calendar at that time. So yes, we will be closed Christmas Eve this year.
So that's just in parentheses, already approved, previously approved. Okay, thanks very much.
Any other comments? May I have a motion in a second for eight point one, eight point three, eight point four?
I'll move them.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin? I have, I see a thumbs up, a visual thumbs up. Stack out. You need to actually vote, Commissioner Elkin. Can you unmute Commissioner Elkin and vote? Please, Sean.
I'm trying. I'm trying. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sorry. Uh, yes.
Right. Commissioner Engbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Golfer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move eight point two to our first action item. So computer and mobile device use policy. It is something, we just moved it to action though. It was filed at the request of Commissioner McKenzie. No? Commissioner McKenzie, did you have specific questions?
No, I did. No, I can't believe it. This is a matchup.
Okay, a little bit of background. The policy made for by the commissioners twenty twenty-three, there were no substantial changes to it. It was just updated in the fifth and four of the new ten books that we've uh, made using.
Commissioner McKenzie? Okay, I think just a, just a clarification in terms of social media. So if we do our own social media on our account and we tag Sonoma County Library and to post events about the library and stuff like that, does that somehow clue to our device? I get there was some sort of discovery process or something like that, that I think that's always been the thing about keeping our library business on our library devices was this, you know.
If you're using social media under your own account, using your own phone, you can tag the library or any of the events and that's on you as a purpose and that would be followed per few of those policies.
And that doesn't show up on then the library's social media. If I tag the library.
I, I, I honestly, I don't use social media, so Brad, maybe you can answer this.
I also like somebody to explain to me the difference between the at sign and the pound sign and how to get uh, and whether the library wants these things, you know, shared to our library account.
Technically, very hollow. Yes, so I'm in library's social media. If you tag it, um, or, sorry, uh, it does show in the library's social media, no matter who you tag, it shows up on their feed. It's not generated by the library. So I find it doubtful that movie reception, you know, PR, is it a public feed currently?
Well, it was. Mark's made, it was made to me about me in a library commission meeting. And then I changed it with help to friends and friends of friends. So I don't know.
Anyone who's an official on the library that tried it, social media accounts to, to browse instead of talking. I, my attorney.
We do have our attorney, our attorney is online, so we should ask Jeff what his thoughts are on this.
I'm having a little difficulty hearing what the question is. Is your question whether if you post something on your social media account, that would be considered a public record?
She's asking if you tagged the library and it shows up on the library's feed, is her phone then discover?
Well, uh, discovery is a little different than Public Records Act. For Public Records Act purposes, if you are conducting library business on your personal device, that is subject to disclosure under the Public Records Act. Probably the same would be true for discovery. So, so yes, I think, uh, I, I'm trying to imagine a scenario where somebody would, where that would be something sought through discovery or a public records act request, but.
Would the, would the discovery be limited because uh, the item in question, the social media posts?
It, it would not expose your phone generally to just somebody randomly going through it, right? In, in all cases, what is subject to the Public Records Act or discoverable are things related to library business. So it doesn't, it doesn't turn your personal device into a device that can just be, you know, trolled by anybody who wants to thumb through whatever you've got on your phone.
If, if I could summarize what I think I hear you saying, Jeff, is that if you tag the library and it is library related, then that document would be considered a public record, but nothing else on your feed, if it was not library related, would be considered and your device would not be, you know, subject to searching for, that, that, is, is that a, a good summary?
Yeah, yes, I agree.
All right. Well, thank you for the clarification, Jeff. Commissioner Engbar? Commissioner Engbar has a hand up. Commissioner Engbar?
Yes, I just have a general question. Um, has the union had the opportunity to um, meet and discuss this with um, the team drafting it?
Can you clarify, are you talking about eight point two?
No, though, the entire document, whether it was reviewed by the union or not.
Uh, yes, again, this document was, was, has been effective since twenty twenty-three, um, and they have seen it. Again, there were no substantial changes to this one brought forth to tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment on this? Moving on, may I have a motion in a second?
Move me through.
Second. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Engbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Golfer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine point one, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, quarter Q one capital expenditure update and new budget request. Ms. Myrna?
Yes. Hello. So this is the first report on the capital expenditures per um, um, procedure that, that we've, that the library has adopted. And uh, staff is asking uh, the commission to approve a reauthorization of funds from the prior fiscal year to the current fiscal year in the amount of one million eighty-five thousand five hundred fifty um, eight dollars. And um, that a result of the modernization project as of that broke ground last year, um, continued into the current fiscal year. And as such, the expenditures for, for the work done current fiscal year have been charged um, to this year. And staff is asking to rebudget or otherwise known as rolling over funds from the prior year to cover its expenditures. So um, that would be a total of eight hundred sixty-eight doll, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars uh, for facilities and a total of two hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars uh, for the IT division. Um, so wondering if, and for the, in the current year, uh, there were um, a total of about eighty-two thousand dollars of capital funds that were um, uh, spent this year. Uh, most of those, of the funds that are budgeted for this year will be spent um, later on in the spring uh, for uh, the the projects for recarpeting and repainting at Rona Park as well as Central, as well as completing IT projects. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Myrna? All right. Any public comments? All right, I'll take a motion in a second.
I'd like to move that the Sonoma County Library Commission approved the reauthorization of funds from FY uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to FY twenty-five, twenty-six in the total amount of one million eighty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, we got David Cahill on that one. So go call Commissioner Cahill. Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Engbar?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Elkin, did you have your hand raised? I just had a sec.
Only the second, but I think Commissioner Cahill beat me to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Golfer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll keep unanimous. Thank you. Item nine point two, Sonoma. Commissioner Doyle?
Sorry, just one note. On page one thirty-three, it says the last sentence is the rebudget request remains within the approved budget for each project. Uh, that's burying the lead. I think that that's an important sentence. And so next time, next time a report comes out, um, tell us that, tell the commission that the report, that the rebudget request remains within the approved budget for the project. Thank you.
Item nine point two, Sonoma County Library, twenty twenty-six salary schedule for employees represented by Service Employees International Union, FBIU. Suzanne.
If you need to correct your bio and hit nerves, sir, to present the annual three percent quota for twenty twenty-six. Do you have any questions regarding the salary system?
Any public comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Move to approve the motion.
Second. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Engbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Golfer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll keep unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to item nine point three, Sonoma County Library, twenty twenty-six salary schedule for unrepresented employees. Ram, any comments?
Yes, thank you. So thinking here of the unrepresented employees, I'd just like to note that there is a change in effective January first that raised the um, what we call the pension compensation limit for Pepperell member. So now we're going to raise to match the threshold for classic members. That meant that once you reach a certain amount of compensation, that awkward would no longer be um, allowing employees to contribute to their pension, but that is a little complicated and too low value rate. So get ready, so they eliminate that threshold. Or not eliminate it, they raised it to about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, so.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions or comment? Any public comment? I'll take a motion in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Engbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Golfer?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll keep unanimous. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we have no items under discussion, so we'll move on to item eleven, commission and liaison reports. I'll take any public comments for any of the reports. And I believe we have one. And item eleven.
My name is Tim May. I'm a member of the Latin Petaluma and I was the chair of this body for about four or five years. I also had the privilege of sitting on the commission as we went from one joint powers agreement to the other. So I lived under two joint powers agreement. Um, the issue that I am referring to is kind of hidden away a little in the report. I appreciate the report. Has to do with leases. And the fact that every city in the uh, in the county has signed leases with the library, which delineates the, their responsibilities for the buildings. And that we have one city that has not signed leases for the entire length of the JPA. And that as a citizen in the county, that is extremely unjust. Because what it means is, is that the Sonoma County Library maintenance and care budget is being used to support and, and correct these libraries. So basically, that money is being taken away from the entire county. Now, I know everybody is kind of aware of this and I know that leases are done in closed session. I also do not blame the current director in any way for no leases because having been here for a while, I've been through four directors who have been unable to come to grips with this issue. So essentially, I'm just here saying, this is the um, an area in the light, whatever you want to use, but we need leases. And I think it came to a point for me essentially, when the commission decided to donate four million dollars to the city of Santa Rosa for the uh, new library, which I do not need, you know, we need the new library. But that city needs to step up and do its due diligence and sign leases. I know the library has no reports. If I were in charge, those libraries would be unlimited hours. Some sort of way of letting the public know that the city is not meeting its obligation. But we don't have that choice. Um, I am basically just wanting to say that I see it as unjust. And I urge the commission to not be quiet about it. I'm wondering if the appoint, the one and a half appointees from the city of Santa Rosa would have any um, uh, pressure to apply to the city to make sure that they meet and can come with a, an agreement. Um, and um, I don't know if there's any right rule of arbitration, some other third party that could come in. But I think this should not go left. Acknowledge that at least in public. Uh, I will also note that there is an interesting uh, missing noun in the document. Um, it, it's the near the final line at the end of the document and the, the lines have something like, the committee recommends, there's no noun, explore a framework for equitable use of funds. But I don't know who it's recommending it do. I don't know who's gonna be doing the uh, judgment on the equitable use of funds. So I appreciate the report. Uh, I realize that the joint powers agreement is an agreement between the cities. It creates the library system. So I don't know whether the other cities are willing to say, hey, we're taking, we're carrying our load, why aren't you carrying your load? But again, that's, it's become quite an issue with me, uh, but I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven point one, commissioner reports. I don't have anything to add to mine. Does anyone have anything to add to their commissioner reports? Eleven point one point two. Commissioner McKenzie?
Um, I just wanted to add, I, I do my report based on the timing to submit it to the agenda. So sometimes I'm, you know, a little bit behind, um, just because of the cutoff date. But anyway, since it's fresh in my mind, I wanted to thank everyone involved with Finding History Day, which was last Saturday. It's just a huge success. A collaboration between our library system and tons of nonprofit groups who are um, mostly volunteers, as I understand it, and I'm, and so involved in local history and local historical societies and so forth. And I wanted to say uh, in public that uh, one of the um, people who's been very involved in so much local history, Margie Purser, who's former professor at Sonoma State University. She was there representing the museum of Sonoma County and she said, Barbara, I want you to know that without the library, this just would not be the same event. It's just so, so important to all the work that's been done to pull everything together and stuff. So I just wanted to, everyone to know how important library is. And that was a great event. I saw uh, Commissioner Golfer there, Commissioner Green was there before me. I don't know how many other people were able to go. But it's a just tremendous and growing event and it's just uh, exciting and it's great to have uh, Sonoma County Library as such a fundamental part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the report? Okay. Moving on to eleven point two, committee and liaison reports, eleven point two point one, the JPA review ad hoc committee reports. I'm sure we have no question. Okay, none. Commissioner Golfer?
Great report. I was very curious about what was going to come out in that process and um, I just thought the report was really easy to understand, it was really well organized, didn't have Didn't have too many words when you didn't need them. Um, just got to the point. Um, I had some questions as I was reading, and then they wound up all getting answered as I kept reading. Um, I'm really glad that there's going to maybe be some further work done about the labs and about our governance, governance, accountability for commissioners and onboarding especially. Um, and I, I just thought you did a great job. What I don't understand is it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, that what you're recommending is two ad hoc committees to come out of this for further discussion. But that, are you going to send? Do the partners have to sign anything? What is the, you're just reviewing? And that's the part I don't understand. What else comes out of it?
So I'll, I'll answer, but I do invite the committee to join me in this. So the language in the JPA is that a review is done. And the review is done, and we will send that review to the JPA members. And that is it?
I just look at it.
Falls in their court then. Commissioner Doyle? I'm sorry, Dr. Kiboe?
Um, yeah, so I, I do want to note that we intended to bring this as an action item, so somehow it ended up in Commissioner Report, so we can't take any action on it at the time. But we will bring it back in December as an action item so that the commission can accept the report. And we can move on with our, um, further things that need to be done.
And we also may have reached out to Jeff, and he's on the phone with us right now. Uh, so if there are, we could look at it from the perspective of if there are no objections, we could simply send the report to the JPA partners. So we could look at it from that perspective as well.
You, you could. The, the recommendation from the committee is that the commission accept the report, which is not the same as approving the report. It is simply acknowledging that the report has been completed. And as you indicated at the beginning of this, the next step would be then to send the report to the members.
And then we wouldn't have to have Sarah's mistake happen again. Because I will own that I did not put it under action when I sent it to us.
And I missed it as well.
Um, I do see Commissioner Angbar has his hand raised. Commissioner Angbar?
Yes, um, first of all, I wanted to commend, um, Chair Lagos for managing this committee as well as it was. Um, I think that we, um, had a good share and we're able to produce, uh, a good report. So I think thanks are in order. I do have a friendly amendment that I'd like to, um, offer, um, the chair of the committee, um, and whether or not, um, um, she would find it acceptable. And that amendment is to the part of Article Five that presently reads, the committee suggests that the responsibilities of connecting with the public are already well served, oops, I'm sorry, well-suited to the library commission. And I'd like to change that to some members of the committee suggests that the responsibilities of connecting with the public are already well-suited to library commissioners and staff. Part of my, um, thinking on that is that we did not, as a group, get together and take a vote on the final uh, draft of, of the document that's being presented. And I, given the opportunity, I'm, I'm sure at least one or two people may have objected to that language as it's presently formulated. So I'd like to just offer that up as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. I think that's a lovely amendment. Commissioner, oh, I'm gonna go. Commissioner Green?
I also just wanted to thank you, um, uh, Chair Lagos, you did a wonderful job, um, helping us figure out what was important to us and keeping the meetings moving along. And, um, really putting all this stuff into the stock and went to thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Uh, yes, uh, first of all, thanks and credit to you, Sarah. It was, uh, you made it what could have been a painful experience almost enjoyable. And, um, it was quite a bit of work. We all spent quite a bit of time going through those wordsmithing and going through, and it was, you know, it was an important task. Uh, but you really, you were able to run the meeting and do the notes and the minutes. I don't know how you did all that stuff, but it was, uh, it was wizardry, but you did a great job. Um, I would like to second, um, Commissioner Angbar's friendly amendment. And I would like to point out a couple of small but semi-important, uh, wordsmithy things. Under Article Review, that first paragraph, about one, two, three, four, five, six lines down. Um, it says, as a result, the recommendations to not suggest, I think what it's supposed to say, as a result, the recommendation, recommendations do not suggest structural overhaul. I think that's an important, tiny little word there. And then, um, on page one fifty-two, at the bottom of the page, uh, under the discussion emphasizing the importance of refining governance practices. The bullet points are all, um, you know, active verbs, reviewing, clarifying, creating, and then the fourth one down is codify. And I think that should be codifying the commission terms to align with the JPA. Um, I'd also like to say that in my time on the commission, my frustrations with the JPA have been consistently leases, roles responsibility, commissioners, labs. And I'm, I think that we did a really good job collectively of, uh, focusing on these problem areas. Well, I think the ad hoc, uh, groups are really important, and I hope we, we follow through with them. Really important to rewrite, uh, to certainly to supplement and just add more specifics to the, to the, uh, application process and the roles of commissioners and making sure people really come on here, understand what it means to be a commissioner, and then of course, the follow-up with the training that you're, you're pointing out. And I do want to thank, I don't know if a former chair, name has left the building, but I want to thank him because, um, I thought his comments were, uh, well-made. I think a lot of us have had frustrations with this, the point of to treat all the jurisdictions equally in terms of resources and so forth. And I, I appreciate him coming down and making that point in public, um, about the jurisdiction that does not, has not been willing to sign leases. So, um, anyway, I, I, again, I mostly want to say thanks to all the committee, but especially to our chair because, um, this, this could have been a nightmare and a mess. And you really pulled us through, you know, organized fashion, and I'm really pleased as a result. And your final words to us was, it may not be, you may not be happy with it, but you're willing to go along. What was it? It's, it's something like, as long as you, you like it, okay. We always, we like it. We may not love it, but we like it. So anyway, it was a great, when you can get consensus together on, on a difficult project like this. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm putting myself in the queue just to acknowledge my fellow committee members because, yes, it could have been, and it is a big topic, and we all have our own viewpoints that we were bringing to the table and representing, and I want to really appreciate everyone who did that. Um, I enjoyed getting to know you all so much better through this process. So I really thank you all for spending that time together and doing this really hard work. And I really do want to appreciate Barbara. She has the best editing eye of anyone that I have had the pleasure of working with. Now I'm going to start sending things to her from my work perspective because she can catch everything. So thank you for those comments. I'll make sure that we update it at that. Um, hang on, I saw that we had Commissioner Elkins in the queue, so I'm going to put Commissioner Elkins, then we'll go Commissioner Cahill, then we'll go Commissioner Angbar. So Commissioner Elkins.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I wanted to just add my applause for what I think is a great job that the whole committee did on this. I was, uh, looking forward to seeing what you would come up with, and you exceeded my, uh, already high expectations. I'm, I know there's been a little discussion about this, and I have heard it, but I would appreciate it if you could clarify or perhaps say a little more about what you see as the next steps here and how we might be able to make actionable some of the recommendations that came out in the report.
So I'm going to go ahead and answer that, Commissioner Elkins. So the recommendations on page one fifty-four are to establish two ad hoc committees to address the role of the labs as well as the roles and responsibilities of the commissioners. So I will, if we move forward with the report with the modifications we've identified, then I will put out a call for that over email and invite you all to nominate yourselves and, and volunteer to serve on those committees, and we'll form them. And then this report will be distributed to the members to meet the requirements of the JPA, and the staff will send that out on behalf of the commission.
Yes, um, is this coming back to us in December for formal approval? Uh, including the, the suggested amendments that have been made from the floor? Or are we kissing it goodbye tonight?
I would love to kiss it goodbye tonight. So considering what council has shared with us, we could simply accept it. There was nothing in here about approving it. The commission is accepting it, and then it could go out to the JPA members. And I also recognize that some of you may prefer a formal action item. So I'm going to let Commissioner Angbar have his comment, and then we'll go to Commissioner Doyle.
Sure, um, thank you. What, what I, two things. One is I, I, uh, second Barbara's recommendations, her amendments, and if there's a way to put them both together into one, one motion, um, that would be good. And I'm also feeling that, at least for myself, I'd like to see a clean copy of the, um, of, of the report with the amendments in it, uh, for us to vote on rather than getting what in, you know, proved to be, at least today, there's some serious questions that came up about the, um, substantive, substantive issues, but rather than just a, a draft of, um, an unamended draft of what the, um, report should be. So those are my two comments.
Commissioner Doyle?
But this may be moot since it seems like we're going to take it around again, but, um, when we accept it finally, are we going to just send it to the partners, or are we going to present it to the partners, or is that a conversation that we're in at later? For example, should a commissioner take it to the, or should Erica take it to the, uh, send it to the? But that could be a conversation that we're having next time. I'm not.
Yeah, participate. We're bringing anything forward substantial changes other than the three edits that have been remarked on today, and the intention would be to approve it in December, so there is an action item for it. Uh, and then the staff would handle dispersing it. My recommendation would be that once it's been dispersed, that's an opportunity for the commissioner to follow up and have a conversation if they need to, but that would be, the recommendation is to have the staff disperse it, and then the commissioner follow up. Commissioner Goldberg?
Well, since we have an opportunity to possibly make amendments, this is really small, but it kind of bothers me, so I'll throw it out there. Um, on page one fifty-two, Article Six, Governance, Governance, end of the fourth paragraph, about onboarding, the last line, and onboarding and training for new commissioners can be more streamlined. Unless I don't know what streamlined means, um, I would actually think not streamlined, the opposite. I would like to change that word to robust. That would be all right. Okay? That's my, uh, amendment.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah, I stuck that amendment also if we need a second. Um, I just want to verify that, uh, an Article ten, page one fifty-three, Article ten, almost toward the bottom, uh, now I can't remember, we pointed this out, but the sentence that we were talking about is right above Article eleven there, right? The committee recommends explore a framework for the equitable distribution, right? And so what exactly are we going to put in there? And, uh, because I don't know that we came to a conclusion about who was going to explore.
Commissioner Doyle?
No, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, we spent a lot of time in the committee editing and, and looking at this, and I think that if we're, if the commission wants to send it back to the committee for another rewrite, then you can make suggestions, but I think the commission is probably not in appropriate place for yet another edit of the, of the report.
Well, I wasn't trying to edit. I was trying to do those wordsmithing things, but somebody else pointed out that it just drops off and doesn't come up.
So if I may make a suggestion, it's probably in one of the versions that has the track changes, the actual wording. So rather than us try to figure out what it is, I think the best course of action is just to go to a draft and see what the, the language was in there.
Okay, I'll defer to our chair to fix that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, too.
Commissioner Coles?
I mean, I'm getting the sense that this is the way we're going. I just think this is very, an important document, and it should be voted on in December. But I don't think it's appropriate. We're going to kind of cut our, like, split it. It's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we'll bring it back as an action item into some way then. Any other comments on the report?
Good job.
Yeah, with the medal. Okay, moving on to Commission, uh, sorry, Finance Committee Reports. Um, we didn't have anything from Commissioner.
Chair Lagos, Chair Lagos, can I interrupt one second? I, I just want to clear up one piece. We've, we have a couple of stated motions and seconds. What I understand is what will be coming back in December, will it be reflecting those changes? Uh, if, you know, a motion and a second, since it's not before you for approval tonight, I don't know that you really do it as a motion and a second, but.
I, I was thinking of more as editing because
Okay.
Barbara has a better editing eye than I do, so I will add those edits, change some of the dos to twos and codifying from codify. So I've received those more as edits.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I don't think you can make a motion on just a report motion anyway, can you? So.
No, that's kind of my point. My point is, yeah.
Hey, Commissioner McKenzie, did you have anything for the Finance Committee?
Um, I guess we didn't get the minutes in, um, because of timing, but, um, we are concentrating especially right now on, um, additional discretionary payments to pay down our CalPERS liability, which is the pension responsibility that we have for our staff. And, um, I think everybody should add this to their, what's, what is it when you have three letters? ADP. Everybody should remember what ADP means. Add that to your vocabulary, like additional discretionary payments. What? It's an acronym. Yeah, thank you. And, um, we, because this was, uh, our December, our September meeting was, uh, at the, a quarterly meeting, we looked at more detailed reports, which we do every quarter rather than, um, on a monthly basis, we look at, you know, less material, but we spent some time going through uh, in, in detail. And, um, anyway, uh, good work being done by our committee and appreciate everybody's, uh, efforts on the Finance Committee. They've done very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goldberg, do you have anything to add to the historic records? Do you have anything to add to the foundation? Excellent. Okay, there's no old or new business. Any agenda items for future commission meeting?
Um, it would, I just have a, a follow-up that came up a couple of meetings back, was, uh, providing, uh, the commission with the report on the status of the Sebastopol Commons, uh, project, and, um, may be able to do that, uh, after our next meeting of that committee, which would, you know, I could put something on the agenda in January. Um, that would bring that up if there's still an interest in, in that.
Okay, the Commissioner McKenzie nodding? Commissioner Goldberg nodding? Okay, yeah, let us know, Commissioner Angbar, when you're ready. All right, uh, Commissioner McKenzie?
Going to ask a question slightly out of order here, but, um, at the end of Commissioner, uh, Goldberg's art, um, let's see, this is Foundation Liaison. It said, rather than a large public gathering is initially envisioned, the November fourteenth groundbreaking event for Roseland is going to be a small event. Uh, could anyone maybe enlighten us about how small and who should be there?
Um, so this is an active construction site, and so that will necessarily limit the number of people.
and so that will necessarily limit the number of people who will be, um, attending. I believe it is, Ray, is it 20? 20, so very small group. Um, it's not going to be a lo, a long ceremony. Um, we are working with the City of Santa Rosa, and, um, we will have more information soon, yeah, because it's just around the corner.
Ray Polly will be, as the Director said, about 20 people. Be a few extra. It is an active construction site. It has been raining on and off, it's still raining on and off. It's not an ideal spot. We didn't really have another spot. The City suggested doing one-off site. Responsible, what's the point? Um, so, uh, City of Santa Rosa Mayor will speak. Beau will speak. Commissioner Saris will speak, you know, her starting from the foundation. A few other people. We'll have a few goodies for them. And we bought, we bought extra ones so the Commission can have a little memento's to the day. Uh, mainly, uh, you'll see there's so many nice photos. And, uh, a construction site that's so busy that we don't want to interrupt it for a party.
So Commissioners are not to be there? Because there's 11 of us, so. Okay.
Slowing down construction in a form of the site will allow us.
Just wanted to clarify, I just saw the note in here, so.
That's fair. Okay. Our next meeting is Wednesday, December 3rd, at 6:00 at the Renner Park Catali Regional Library. And I see Commissioner Doyle has her hand raised.
Sorry, I, I'm not sure that, whether this was announced or not, but, um, some of you may have heard about the movie The Librarians. It's, uh, it's about librarians who have struggled with censorship. It's not the free public library movie that we have here, but this is another one. And, um, it is going to be playing at, um, the Raffel Theater down in San Raffel. So it's a ways away, but it's a fabulous theater. And they're going to have a discussion afterwards. And this is December 10th at 7:00, 7:00 PM. I can send a note that you can send to the Commissioners. But I think the tickets are something like 15 bucks or 20 bucks. Um, but it should really be a fabulous event, so I'll send you a commission.
Well, so, all right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah.